I'm not going to gavel because I'm going to reconvene the Wednesday, March 21st, 2018 Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee Open Meeting. And the first item on the agenda is the public hearing for FY 2018 budget.
Thank you. Tonight, as in every year, before the budget is presented to the towns, we do have a public hearing on our voted and approved FY 2019 operational budget. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee has identified its priorities for the 2019 budget season. These budget priorities are included in the public hearing document that is presented here this evening. This document is also available on the district website, or certainly by contacting the main office and at town offices throughout our two communities. The Northborough-Southborough Regional School Committee is committed to providing an excellent education to the youth of the two towns in a very cost-effective manner, educationally sound and fiscally responsible. It commits to a strong cooperative working relationship with other parts of the town governments in the development of the school budget and the involvement of parents and community as active partners with the school. The budget priorities and the mission of the regional school committee serve as guiding principles by creating a framework for discussions and decisions taking place throughout the budget process. I will be providing a total of the FY 19 budget subcategories by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Function Code as part of the public hearing process. The line item budget is also available here this evening and also available on our website and certainly contacting central office. Function 1000 District Leadership and Administration includes: School Committee Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, District-wide Administration, Finance and Administrative Services, Personnel, Legal Services and Administrative Technology (663,443). Function 2000 Instructional Services includes: Supervision, Principal's Office, Building Technology, Teacher Salaries, Teacher Specialist Salaries, Instructional Technology, Substitutes, Technology Specialists, Library and Media Salaries, Professional Development for Teacher Staff and Leadership, Professional Development, Substitutes, Textbooks, Instructional Materials, Other Instructional Materials, Instructional Equipment, General Supplies, Classroom Instructional Technology, Instructional Software and Guidance (11,509,251). Function 3000 Other Student Services includes Health Services, Transportation and Student Body Activities. It's so noted that a total amount budgeted for student body activities in this line item is $103,93. The budgeted amount does not include an offset of anticipated student activity fees totaling $50,000. Total for the function code 3,000 is $1,466,960. Also included in function code 3,000 Athletics, this includes the costs related to transportation, athletic salaries and services and officials. This number, the athletic budget, does not include an offset of $348,722 from anticipated gate receipts and student user fees. That amount $536,747 represented in the operational FY 2019 budget. Function 4,000 Operation and Maintenance of Plant includes Custodial Services, Custodial Supplies, Heating, Electricity, Telephone, Gas and Gasoline, Water, Sewer, Maintenance of Buildings, Maintenance of Equipment, Networking and Telecommunication, Technology Maintenance and Maintenance of Buildings and Grounds (1,720,050). This does not include the total cost of the maintenance in buildings and grounds, which we derive from parking revenues in the amount of $70,000 and additional revenues from building rentals. Function 5,000 Fixed Charges includes: Employment, Retirement, Health Insurance, Life Insurance, Medicare, Surtax Insurance, Workers' Compensation Insurance, Unemployment Compensation, Comprehensive Liability Insurance, Rental of Land Building Equipment (3,620,778). Function 7,000 Includes New Equipment Over $5,000 (155,200). Function 9,000 Includes School Choice and Charter School Tuition (290,000). The total budgeted amount for regular day programs in the FY 2019 approved budget, $19,944,429. Equally so, for all of those function codes, there is an amount associated with special education. So, all of the function codes, again, repeats. I will not read them all again. I'm looking across the table. Function 1,000 is the regional share of the district leadership previously mentioned, $9,300. Function 2,000 is the supervision function code, again, read earlier, $2,271,114. Again, these are related to special education. Function 3,000 Student Services, which includes, in this case, Health Services and Transportation[335.43][335.43](251,280). Maintenance of Equipment, Function 4,000, $2,000. Function 5,000 Fixed Charges, $1,595. Function 9,000 Tuition Paid to Non-Public Schools (603,240). This amount does not include the circuit breaker reimbursement offset of $382,379. Total of Special Education Programs represented in the FY 19 Northborough-Southborough Budget (3,138,529). The total FY 2019 Operational Budget represents a total amount of $23,82,958, which is an overall increase of 3.49% or an amount equal to $778,492.
Okay. Is there, are there any questions from the public in our public hearing? No. Then I will close the public hearing. All right. Next item on the agenda is...
Probably not something you want on camera, but a thumbs up there on that one.
The camera can also not see the time.
That's right. Absolutely.
So, I am going to use my power as chair to, it's the will of the committee, to move everything on the agenda around and move new business, guidance department presentation, English department presentation, up to the first item on the agenda so that our presenters can go home.
Thank you. So, I'm Jane Beatar, and I'm Chair of the English Department. And I've got some people with me today, but first, I just want to take two minutes before I introduce them. So, I was looking at my slide from last time I came to chair with you and presented a few years ago. In the last slide, I was looking at my PowerPoint, and I don't need this. Oh, maybe for cable? Do I need this?
Cable.
Okay. What's happening? I was looking at the last slide from the presentation a few years ago, and it was called, "What Does the Future Hold?" And I'm happy that our department has actually accomplished a few of the tasks on this "What Does the Future Hold?" Many of them are new classes, but one of them on here was really just a dream. And thankfully, thanks to Seth Arneke and Sarah Stein and these students you see here today, that was a writing center out of Algonquin. I've always dreamt of one, but I have never actually been willing to put in the hard work and dedication and study and examination that is needed to start up a program like that. So, you guys will hear from them shortly, because that's the highlight of tonight, is Algonquin's new writing center. But before I hand this over to them, I have to, I know you're all very familiar with The Harbinger, but we are on the heels of some huge accomplishments that I wanted to share with you as the English Department Chair. And The Harbinger, I think about seven, seven of them editors and staff members came home from New York not long ago. And in New York, they were awarded something they've been working towards for many years, the highest award nationally that a high school publication can receive, and that's the Gold Crown Award from the Columbia Scholastic Press Association. And they received that award last week, to their surprise, but certainly very deserved. Another award that they received was from the National Scholastic Press Association. They're up for the Online Pacemaker Award. They're finalists, along with, I think, 40 other newspapers in the nation. They will find that out and share with us if they are awarded that award. And also really exciting, Cassidy Wang, editor of The Harbinger, was voted Massachusetts Student Journalist of the Year by the Journalism Education Association. We're always looking, on my list of what's, you know, what's ahead of us in the English Department, we are always looking for opportunities for our students to do some authentic work in the field. And the student publications are certainly one of those ways. Seachem, the literary magazine, was awarded a Silver Crown last year for the publication last year. But we're always looking for ways to move them beyond our classroom. And I think that the Algonquin Writing Center is such, is one of those moves, and it's such an authentic effort. And I would like to welcome Sarah Stein, Seth Arneke, and I think the students are going to share with you. So, we have Elsa Ray and Katie Fos Hunter, and Kara Hadn't. Daphne Bento was here, but she went to go finish her gymnastics. So, welcome, you guys. You'll have to take a mic, I suppose. I don't know who's up first. I couldn't be...
We're proud of these folks. Okay. Okay. So, we are the Algonquin Writing Center, and if you guys haven't already, we invite you to, after the meeting, or if you have to take a break, walk through. We're right in the back of the library, and it takes you right into the hallway. So, in front of you is our mission statement, and the two main things that I want to emphasize from this statement is that the Algonquin Writing Center really prioritizes collaboration and then comfort. So, what defers the Algonquin Writing Center from like a typical pure tutoring establishment is that it's really all about like guiding the writer to his or her own like writing process and not just telling them what to do, like make this edit, change that sentence. It's more about like, what do you think would best accomplish your goal for the paper? And then, the second part of that, comfort. Because it's peer-to-peer, there is a level of like relatability that might not always exist when it's more of a student with an authority figure. So, all of our tutors have to enroll in a semester course called Advanced Writing Seminar 1 in order to become tutors. And this means that all of our tutors are very well-trained and very well-qualified, so they're not just students who enjoy writing, they're students who really understand what goes into the writing process and what we can do to help other students find their own voices and develop their own skills as writers. It's an honors course, it's fairly rigorous, and yeah, it's a semester course. And then, to sort of go into what actually happens during a typical session, each session is 40 minutes and starts off with a few minutes of greetings and establishing rapport between the tutor and the writer. And then, it's going to go into kind of asking the writer what their goals are for the session, what their deadline is, how much they've worked on. They can come at any stage in the writing process, so whether that's brainstorming, or drafting, or final touches, and then going through their work, developing their ideas, and then kind of just reflecting on the session as a whole, and where they can go from there. This is what we're doing now.
Wow.
So, here we have a couple statistics for you, kind of that have been accumulated over the past year or so since we've been open. Currently, we have 46 staff members who are actively tutoring, working with students, and making sure that they get all the support that they need. We have about three and a half sessions per day. That's obviously an average. Sometimes we have more, sometimes we have less. One of the things that we do have is during the day, we have tutoring sessions that run periods 2 to 7, which there's always a tutor in the Writing Center who's working with students or working on an independent project to help like improve the Writing Center and its functioning. And we also do after-school tutoring. We've had around 460 appointments over the last three semesters. That's as of like Monday. And so, that's our total that we've had since we've been open, since last December. We have 14 tutors in training in the course that Kara was talking about, the Advanced Writing Seminars. And about 90% of respondents left their session with a good idea of how to improve their writing, which is huge, because we've been working really hard on making sure that we get people who are really satisfied with what they're doing, and people who are really willing to work with others and really help them engage in the writing process in a fulfilling way. And here we have kind of the breakdown of the writers who come into the Writing Center. And as you can see right now, we have a lot of juniors who are coming in, but we're working on kind of trying to expand it so that there are a lot more people coming in from the other grades as well, to kind of help everyone in the school. And here are kind of like the breakdowns of who's coming in when. And we see kind of the dip in January and February, just because that's when we have like midterm, so there's obviously going to be less people coming in when we don't, we have like tests and stuff. But overall, we've been getting a lot of really good business, and it's going up for March when we're getting more and more assignments, so that's good as well. And in terms of discipline, obviously, a lot of it's coming from the English Department and English teachers. We are seeing a rise from like the Social Studies Department and History, because they're helping us with promoting, and when they're assigning like a very large paper, I know like AP World will kind of, Ms. Utar is really good about promoting us, and some of the other papers that they have to write, they come and ask us to help. As well as Biology, which is really good, and we're hoping to kind of engage more of the sciences as well, because they do do a lot of writing, and it would be good to have support for them, too.
So, as Katie mentioned before, we, something that we're very excited about that is new to us in the last few months are our extended hours. Previously, during this school year and last, we were only open after school, four days a week. But now, we have tutors in the Writing Center almost every period during the school day, and those tutors are available for students to come in for a traditional tutoring session to work on their paper and to help them with the writing process. But the tutors are also there to work on Writing Center-focused projects, on bettering the Writing Center, as Katie mentioned before. But the ability for students to come in during the school day really gives them a more one-on-one experience, because it's usually just them and the tutor in the Writing Center. And if a student couldn't make it in after school, they're more than welcome to come in during the day during a study. So, this is something that we're really, really excited about, and it is also new development. And we have seen a lot of positive feedback regarding having more time available for tutoring. So, it's been a great thing that's happening for us.
Okay. So, yeah, kind of going off of the extended hours, how that works is we have students, I believe they're all seniors, enrolled in Advanced Writing Seminar 2, which is kind of the second part to the first course. And that's kind of an individual course where you are in the Writing Center for the whole period, and if you're not tutoring students, then you're working on your own independent project. And this gives a lot of the tutors, who may not have had the opportunity, an opportunity to like have a stake in the Writing Center and to really do something to improve it that however they see fit. And there's also the Rent a Tutor Program that they're available for, which brings them into other classrooms. So, I know teachers have rented out tutors, and then if the students are brainstorming, then they'll have like an extra set of eyes to help the other students.
All right. So, another exciting development that we have had this year is that a group of nine tutors, including myself and Kara, attended the CAPTA Conference in December in Washington, DC. CAPTA stands for the Capital Area Peer Tutoring Association, in case you're wondering. And it was a really great experience, because at this conference, tutors from all over the eastern part of the United States, mostly from the Virginia area though, they came together at this conference for one day, and we went to various seminars, keynote speeches regarding different aspects of the Writing Center, from tutoring practices, to working with ESL students, to how to make the Writing Center more inviting through light and color. And we learned all these different ideas from people with different backgrounds in tutoring, different approaches to tutoring, which really opened our eyes up to really the world of how we can make our Writing Center better. And everybody that went on the trip really, really benefited, and we were able to come back to the Writing Center and share ideas with our fellow tutors. And we have been working on incorporating those ideas that we learned into the Writing Center in these last few months. So, it's really been an overall very beneficial experience, and it was also a really great time to have, going to this conference and meeting all these really smart people that have so many different ideas. Mr. C. is going to talk about this one.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Seth Arneke. So, that CAPTA organization has grown throughout the years, and at that conference, they announced that they would become a national brand. And so, they have now become the Secondary Schools Writing Centers Association, for which we are a member school, and for which I am the Northeast Regional Representative. And so, what that allows us to do is it gives us access to this professional community of other secondary schools, both at the high school level and the middle school level, and allows them to connect with their peers, as Elsa alluded to, you know, where we're able to sort of think as ourselves, of ourselves as professionals and engage in that sort of professional development that you would hope any educational organization would want to do. And so, that's something that we're really excited about, and there's sort of exclusive access to digital roundtables where they're able to sort of like meet over a Google Hangout and discuss with people all across the country. So, that's my two cents.
Okay. So, then, these are our plans for the future. So, this past October, we held our first-ever college essay workshop, and because that one was closer to college application deadlines, it focused a lot on organization and writing of the essay. But this May, we are going to host one for juniors that will really focus on brainstorming and the creative elements of the workshop. And this is just a great opportunity to reach out to more students if they haven't heard of the Writing Center, and also to help students get that jumpstart on the essay, because that can be a very stressful part of the application process.
So, as the new organization that we are, we are trying to work on some fundraising to further our outreach within the Algonquin community and Northborough-Southborough communities. So, we've been looking to accomplish, oh, sorry, accomplish some various goals through this fundraising, such as getting the materials we need for the Writing Center, post-it notes, paper, computers, and also to host activities within Algonquin, such as like the college essay workshops or writing contests, or activities that will help the Algonquin community. We also, recently, a fundraising goal that we achieved was that we finally purchased this new scheduling software that we're very, very excited about, which is going to help the Writing Center run a lot more smoothly, and it's been working out great. We've had it for like a week now. And as I said before, community outreach, and something that we're looking to in the future is possibly using this fundraising to start a relationship with the middle schools on some level of writing partnership, to kind of introduce middle schoolers to the ideas of high-level writing and also the concept of a Writing Center. So, we're looking at that in the future, and we would be looking to achieve some fundraising in order to accomplish that. And to get the money we need for fundraising, we have been looking for sponsorship from local businesses. We've had a few bake sales that have been very successful. So, in the future, we are hoping to continue our fundraising success and accomplish all and more of these goals.
Okay. And then, the last thing that we're looking forward to is our first-ever Write-A-Thon, which we're hoping will become an annual event. And basically, this is a six-hour Write-A-Thon from 4:30 to 10:30 p.m. on April 6th, where teams will raise money for a literacy-related charity. And so, this year, it's only involving English-related organizations, because we wanted to make sure it would run smoothly. In the next year, we're hoping to expand it to other organizations. But yes, people will just be writing all night, kind of like Relay for Life, and it's going to be really fun.
Well, I'm going to leave you with some positive words of wisdom, as they say. And this is a quote from one of the Algonquin teachers here. "The Writing Center is a perfect opportunity for students to come and get a new perspective on their writing." I think that's kind of what we're all about, is just helping people, helping students feel more comfortable, helping them work with people. And a lot of times, when we talk about tutoring, it's not just improving their writing, it's also helping them work with people and like interpersonal skills, which are so valuable in life. And we also have, from an Algonquin student, "I was nervous about sharing my writing at first. My tutor was incredibly helpful and steered me towards the right direction on my paper," which, again, is exactly what we're going for and is, couldn't ask for anything better. So, thank you.
There's no free to come, stop by for egg sticker, barbeque and cupcake.
And cupcakes.
Just for food.
Are there cupcakes now?
Any questions? Any questions?
You guys did a good job.
It's a wonderful job.
It's just amazing.
Unbelievable.
In such a short period of time, just to have that many people feel comfortable going in, 460 appointments, really impressive.
Thank you for the time.
Outstanding.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Great job.
Sorry to cut you.
I'm the Director of Guidance here at Algonquin, and I have to say, what a fabulous presentation It's been a lot of fun watching them, you know, develop the Writing Center. I've worked pretty closely with Seth and Sarah, whether it's through scheduling or, you know, many questions that they've had, they've come down, and I think it's such a wonderful opportunity for our students, and they've done fabulous work. And so, I just really enjoyed listening to the students talk about it and the success that they've found with that. But tonight, I'm here to talk about what's new in guidance. So, I'm going to give just a couple brief updates, and I think I'm primarily going to talk about, I think, what Christine mentioned earlier, and that's our Connections Program and our focus on our relationships with students in school. So, just a couple quick updates, because we always have a lot going on in guidance, for sure. And one of the things that we undertook this year was the, how we were utilizing iPass. And so, we began, we opened up iPass to students and parents this year. And the reason that we decided to do that was, of course, you know, it's a constant struggle of how we disseminate information, whether it is the distribution of schedules and report cards. And we already had a system in place that would allow us to disseminate that information electronically, so it would streamline things, especially in August, when all the students wanted to see their schedules, or the change of the semester, when they wanted to see their schedules, as well as report cards and attendance information. So, it allows parents to be able to go in and kind of, you know, see their student records and students to be able to see their records as well. So, that has been a big undertaking that we've taken on this year, starting with the schedules, and of course, now leading into course selection. So, this is our first year where we are doing course selection online, and, you know, so far, so good, minus the six snow days that we've had, and all of the extensions we've had. So this is our first year where we are doing course selection online, and, you know, so far, so good, minus the six snow days that we've had and all of the extensions we've had to make to provide everybody an opportunity to, you know, complete the course selection process. But right now, students are finishing, student and parents are finishing up, you know, submitting their requests for courses next year. And then the guidance counselors will be going and working on, you know, finalizing everything. And I think that's when we're really gonna find out how well it's worked. So next week, when guidance starts reviewing what the students' requests have been, then we'll kind of have a good understanding of how well it has worked. I think we were a little more fearful of it than the students were. You know, I mean, we're like, oh my goodness, how are they gonna be able to do this and do that? And they were right on their phones in like two seconds, like, you know, doing the course selection stuff. So we've done a lot of training. There was training involved with the teachers. We did workshops with all of our students going over the course selection process, you know, talking with them about graduation requirements and, you know, their development of their schedules. And then we added the technology component to it and introduced them to iPass. You know, I presented at APTO, and we've had, we had a sophomore parent presentation where we reviewed all of this and we've sent all kinds of information out to our parents. So I'm kind of hopeful next week that all of our hard work is really gonna pay off and it's streamlined that process for us. And it's really, I think it's worked well for the students. So that's one thing that we've undertaken, is the opening of iPass, and so far, so good. Another thing I just wanted to kind of touch base on, we had been here last year and done a presentation on our research around rank. And I know we have a new, a couple new committee members, so I just wanted to touch base on that as well. So we had undertaken, probably like a year and a half ago, we started the process of doing our research around rank and whether or not we wanted to move away from ranking our students. And so as many of you might remember from our presentation before, we surveyed students and parents and teachers for information. We also went and we looked at a lot of the area high schools and whether or not they were ranking. And through our research, you know, we came to find that we were one of, you know, just a few high-performing high schools in the state of Massachusetts who actually were still ranking their students. We then also had an opportunity to go to Holy Cross, and we had a day with one of, with their admissions office. And they were giving us some feedback in regards to, you know, ranking our students as well. And they highly recommended to us that we move away from the ranking of our students because we're such a high-performing school that, you know, for a student, you could have a student who's in all honors level classes getting Bs and B pluses, and they're ranked 140 in the class, you know. And, but yet, those students are quite capable of doing work at some of these highly selective schools. So we were found through our research that it was putting some of our students more at a disadvantage, ranking them. And we really wanted the colleges to take a more holistic read of our students. So, you know, through all that research, you know, the decision was made that we would move away from ranking our students. So of course, beginning with the class of 2019, which is our current juniors, we're no longer reporting ranks to students, parents, or colleges. One of the things we also looked at as part of the rank process was scholarships. You know, if we move away from ranking, you know, what is the impact that that would have on scholarships? And so again, we looked to our contacts in the admissions field, you know, for feedback on that. And really, what we found was that it would not have an impact and that, you know, if we had a student, like if a, if a school, say, has a scholarship for, you know, the number one or number two student in the class, that if we simply write, if our school was to rank, if we made a note in the letter of recommendation by the guidance counselor, that they could then consider them, you know, for those, you know, specific scholarships. But overall, they're gonna take a holistic read of the students and then offer them Mara scholarships. You know, so again, we made sure we touched base that we weren't gonna be doing anything, you know, that would put our students at a disadvantage. So I think the one thing that we have outstanding is, of course, graduation next year. You know, our tradition has been to, you know, identify our valedictorian or salutatorian. And I think at graduation, so I think as a school, we're still discussing, you know, how this aligns with our decision to eliminate rank. And so that is something that we're gonna have to continue to have a discussion about and kind of come to some resolution, because of course, the class of 2019's gonna graduate in the next year and a half, so we are gonna have to, you know, make a decision about that. But that's something that's an ongoing conversation, you know, with our leadership team and with our faculty. So that's just a quick little update on rank. Another thing that we are actively involved in, of course, is our International Exchange Program. And I know many of you have heard, you know, about our work with this program. We, this is our second year, we're in our second year of working with Cambridge Institute in enrolling students. So this is our second year of having students come in, they primarily come in from China with Cambridge. And then this year is our first year of having students come in through another organization called CIEE. And we have a lovely student, you know, here with us, studying with us from Spain. And so we're excited to continue to expand the number of exchange students who are coming into Algonquin. You know, one of the things that I found in my work with the organizations, they said sometimes it takes a couple years for a program to really get up and running because you need to have some students who have had some success at your school, you know? So it's kind of like you're building your brand and people begin to know, like, oh, Algonquin, that is a great school, and you have some, almost referrals from your past students. So we're excited. We have one student who is committed to coming here next year. And this is prime time right now for, you know, applications to start coming in. So we're kind of hoping to, you know, improve on the two students that we've had and continue to expand that program. And we also, you know, have a, is it the, they changed their name from Dow. It's our diversity, our diversity group ambassadors, cultural ambassadors, I think they changed their name to. And so they're excited because that used to be our diversity awareness club, and now they're calling it cultural ambassadors. And they're excited to have us continue to expand that program because they want to expand their work with our exchange students and kind of introducing our overall student body, you know, to cultural differences, you know? So that's a little update on our exchange program. We've also been doing a lot with our curriculum. And, you know, for those of you who are new, we have a fabulous program called Day for Change, and it's a day-long program that we work with our freshmen. And it's really an anti-bullying program, and the whole purpose of it is to kind of break down those stigmas, those barriers among students, to help students to realize that they're really more alike than they are different, you know, and the impact that maybe we have on one another. So we've been doing that for a few years now. Of course, we started out with smaller groups. This was our second year of doing the entire class, and it is our hope to get, you know, we'll get to the point where at some, you know, in a couple of years, where the whole school has participated in the program. Now, what we're looking to do, now that we've gotten this, you know, kind of under our belt, you know, for the whole freshman class, we're looking to expand it. So next year, we're gonna start working with our peer mentor program. And, you know, that's the group that welcomes our students in at freshman orientation, and we're gonna start doing pre and post activities so that, you know, Day for Change is not just a one-day activity, but we're gonna expand upon the work that we're doing with Day for Change. We've also been doing a lot of work this year around programming to support positive choices, you know, among our students. We just had a fantastic presentation today for our juniors and seniors, Kevin Brooks. And I know he's gonna be presenting tomorrow night in the black box to the parents, you know. And right before February vacation, we had Travis Roy in for, you know, grade nine and 10. And, you know, Travis had a fabulous message in that, you know, sometimes we choose our challenges and sometimes our challenges choose us. And the whole idea behind it really was about, you know, perseverance and resiliency and, you know, how do we kind of rise above, you know, when those challenges choose us? And so that was a great message for our underclassmen. And then Kevin Brooks, again, positive choices. And, you know, he unfortunately made a bad choice when he was in high school that resulted in a pretty significant accident. But his overall message was really positive to our kids about choice and resiliency and, you know, facing challenges head-on and, you know, so that was wonderful today. He, the kids gave him a standing ovation. So, yeah, and many of them stayed after to talk to him. The teachers, many of the teachers were stopping me in the hallway and saying, oh my goodness, the kids were, you know, thought that was a fabulous presentation. So sometimes, when we have these programs, we don't always necessarily know the impact that we're having on students. We might not be with them when they have a moment where they're like, wow, I don't think I wanna do that, you know? So it's really about a positive message and making good choices. We're also gonna have a Safe Driving Day that's gonna happen after April vacation that we're gonna be collaborating with, you know, North Borough, South Borough, PD, as well as the fire chiefs. And they're gonna be doing a mock crash, and we're working with our task group, which was formerly SAD. So we have a lot of our students who, you know, are developing these activities and they're kind of the face of the activities. So we're doing a lot of great work to kind of promote those positive choices and the impact that they can have on our students. A great thing that we did with our college to, college and career readiness skills, we had a community member come in and do professional development with the guidance counselors, Jonathan Cogswell, he does, he's a career counselor. So he came in and did a professional development day with us on the Myers-Briggs and the personality type, because that's a lot of work that we already do with our sophomores through Naviance. And so we wanted to kind of expand the work that we were doing with this, and he gave us some great ideas. I'm really excited. Right before we go in, go away for April vacation, we're gonna do some workshops with our sophomores with some very interactive activities to help our kids understand the connection between type and career and, you know, to really get them thinking about what is it that they'd like to do in the future? And how does my personality kind of connect to my career? So that was a great opportunity for us. We just had an awesome career day. I don't know if anybody, you know, heard from their students or heard from a neighbor. We just had, last year, Lori Zanini in the Science Department has been doing a career day for probably the past seven years. And I was like, why is Lori the only one doing career day? So I'm like, we need to have more career days. And so we reached out to her and collaborated with her, and I said, what is some of the work that you're doing? You know, do you have handouts and stuff? So she shared a lot of her information with us, and then we just kind of put our own little flavor to it. And last year, we worked with Diane DeSantis in the Math Department to have a career day. We kind of wanted to try it, see how it went. And then this year, we worked with Jane and Brittany Burns in the Math Department. So this year, we're gonna have four core content areas that are bringing career speakers in and really kind of sharing their journey with our students, because I think that is so important. Our kids oftentimes are so stressed about figuring out, like, you know, I just had a phone call today, like, what is the perfect number of AP classes? And, you know, what is the perfect school? And, you know, there's a lot of stress around, you know, all of that. And it's, it's so refreshing to hear from people who are in the workplace who, you know, have, you know, had a lot of different experiences. And maybe they initially came out of high school thinking they were gonna do a certain thing, but yet they've, you know, through their experiences, end up doing something completely different. It's just such a great message for our kids, and there was a lot of positive energy. We had over 70 speakers in here on Friday. So that was fabulous, great opportunity for community connections, because through that, we had a lot of people leaving us cards and indicating that they, they're happy to do internships, to come back in for additional presentations. And that's ultimately our goal, is to try to increase the number of opportunities we have for our students through internships, you know, as well. And so, again, we continue to do all of our rep visits in the CRC and our College Fair. You know, we have over 100 schools that come in every year. And then we'd like to try to, you know, work on, work towards a senior pilot of, you know, having our seniors go out on an internship, maybe develop an internship class and then send them out for some internship. So on a small scale, and then maybe we can work it up like we did the career days, where everybody's, you know, experiencing in some, some type of internship opportunity. So we've got a lot of great things going on. The counselors work really hard to kind of bring all this stuff together and collaborate with us. But the one thing that I really wanted to kind of talk about today was the work that, you know, we're doing as a school around the Connections Program. And Christine had mentioned that earlier about, you know, why we don't necessarily agree with the expert and, you know, utilizing just a simple assessment, you know, with our students, because, you know, we have found, you know, research indicates that, you know, one of the biggest protective factors, you know, in a child's life is a caring adult. And so that, the relationship that a student had, the relationships that students have really help with a lot of those things we're often talking about, whether it's stress, whether we're talking about their mental health, you know, students maybe, you know, contemplating self-harm, whether it's substance abuse, whatever it might be, having that protective factor of a caring adult in your life significantly reduces risky behavior. So one of the things, and Sarah has been, you know, a huge supporter of the Connections Program in the high school and really promoting that and working, you know, around developing those relationships. So thank you, Sarah, I appreciate your support, because I do think overall, it helps with the mental health of our students. So we did a professional development day, and we started off by sharing out the Metro West Health Foundation, some of the data that was in there, you know, because that kind of set the groundwork for our faculty to kind of understand the importance of those protective factors around some of these risky behaviors. And we did a lot of, you know, small group activities around, you know, connections and relationships and what is the work that's currently going on in the classrooms. So through that professional development, we decided to have a Connections Committee. So we're currently working together, Christina Smith is one of the people that's on the committee with us. We have a great group of faculty who are working together. We're trying to kind of harness the positive energy and the ideas that people are utilizing maybe in their own classroom, so that we then can kind of disseminate some of this out into the whole school. So our purpose, our purpose is to begin to develop school-wide activities that we can employ in every classroom. And so our goal is to come back next year and really kind of have a plan in place that really puts a strong emphasis on that adult-student relationship and developing those connections. And that you'll find that when that connection is there, oftentimes, performance improves, you know, because students are ready to learn. They come in your class, they're ready to, they wanna work harder for you, you know, because they feel as though you're, you're really invested and connected. And so we want, you know, with everything that's going on in the world, where we're talking about school violence, whatever it is, we know that when kids are connected, the results are a lot more positive. So we're hoping that through the Connections Program versus someone, five-minute screening, you know, that, but through a concerted effort by all, on the part of all of our faculty and staff, that will have a very positive impact on our students. So that's why we kind of like, like the waiver, right? Because we really feel that to have a long-term impact on our students, the relationships are the way to go and investing in time into developing those relationships. That's kind of like a little, and that was just about our, like, our weekly, I just wanted to mention that our Student Assistance Team meets on a weekly basis. That's all of our counselors and administration, and we really kind of talk about, you know, any issues that might be pervasive in the building, you know, programming standpoints, whatever it might be. But we have a great team that kind of works together to do wraparound services and supports for our students. And then we also still have our, our Access Program, you know, which has been a huge addition to the high school. And for those of you, you know, who maybe are new to the committee, we, through the Metro West Health Foundation, were awarded a grant, and we started a transitional program, and that helps students maybe who are out for various reasons, right, to transition back into school. And again, it's all about that relationship and that support so that they don't fall through the cracks and fall further behind. So the Access Program has been a huge addition to kind of our overall philosophy behind that, those relationships and those connections and, you know, catching those kids early on that might be at risk. So that's a little guidance. And my department wanted to thank you all for your support. You've been very supportive of our work. And does anybody have any questions or?
Well, we wanna thank you for not making your entire department come here tonight, because that would have been just so unfair to them.
They wanted to, was the shocking part, they wanted to.
I know, and I'm glad that they did not. I hope this is what, like, prompted them to have some.
Okay, so great, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, 40 years ago, I just, I had the, I had the opportunity to, to be part of the Yaski.
part of the process five years ago, six years ago, whatever it was. And, um, and it was because of that, that I actually got sort of a insider's view of all the stuff that Guidance does. I mean, as parents, we just think of them as, they're the, they're the people that, um, yes, that help with getting into college, that help, you know, with some course selection, and, you know, that's about it. And that is literally those most visible things that they do, that is just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, what they do underneath the pyramid of things to do is just incredible. And thank you very much, and thank your staff for everything that you do, because, um, you know, we just heard about the, the new things and the changes, but all the stuff that you've been doing all these years is just miraculous. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, go home. Okay, in that vein, I'm going to go with a theme, and that is our next presenter. I'd like to move up, and for the superintendent's report to the committee, I'd like to move up the principal's report, so that she too can go home, before the lights get turned out on us.
Thank you. I did sneak in daffodils, though, because that is the flower of March, and we are in the second day of spring, so my fingers are crossed. Um, well, you'll notice in the principal's report, equally exciting, still four pages, I know, I've tried. Um, I started right off with English. Jane spoke so highly of it, I just have to give another kudos to the Harvey and to Cassidy Wing for their phenomenal work. For those of you that, um, were here for, that combined, I just wanted to speak about Bandaroma. We had Northborough linking up with Algonquin. We had 495 band students come together and perform a concert that showcased the development of music from the middle school to the high school, and they, they go from different sections, and you can actually watch the progression and articulum of the music program from the middle of the high school. So if you were able to experience that, it was a huge success. I'm going to jump down to Best Buddies. This past Friday, I have to go on record, the dance was canceled. There was snow, I believe, the last school meeting, and I was like, it's not going to snow. It snowed. So, corrected, I stand corrected, we had the Best Buddies Dance this Friday. And for those that aren't aware of it, we invite local high schools and Best Buddy chapters to all come to Algonquin together under the Friendship Dance, and the theme this year was Under the Sea. And it's, it was my first time experiencing it, and it was breathtaking to watch all the parents come together, all the buddies come together and collaborate as a, as a community beyond the Algonquin walls, and just enjoy the night of coming together and working together, dance, games, very specific different ways to entertain the children so they could stay engaged the whole night. And I just give huge kudos to Isabel, the president, and Mr. Hausman, the student advisor for the program. They have quite a few other accolades underneath that, but just a shout out to the work that they do. I'm skipping down. HOSA did the, um, Heart Chase Incorporated, American Heart Association. They had five classes come down, um, from PE and Physiology, and they set up different activities for the kids to participate in, and yes, that is a student holding a snake. That is the picture that you see. They were completely engaged, but the purpose of it was different ways to promote, um, healthy awareness. And so I visited the gym a couple of times that day, and 100% of the children were 100% engaged in the activities that were going on. It was phenomenal, in different ways that they could de-stress, that they could get engaged, that they could increase their health, mental health, physical health, and it was just a wonderful way to take what was going on in the classroom and make it real life again. Transitioning to DECA, speaking of snow, um, in one of our recent nor'easters, when we lost the power, I have to give kudos to DECA, they still went on to Boston and competed. And thank goodness that they did, they had 43 finalists in the competition, um, and it was one of our bigger placements. And I just commend the parent support and the students for coming through the storm, because many of them showed up that day with no power. So they were planning on ironing their clothes when they got to the hotel, because things just came a little wrinkled. So, and, and just great, um, work by their advisor, Ms. Riley, for, for holding it all together and being there for the kiddos and having them go. Switching over to the next page, both our robotics and our programming teams recently competed, huge successes. I snuck in some pictures there. Shout out to our student council, they're coming back strong for their annual spring food drive, so I got to put a kudos in there and a shout out, so hopefully we can get some donations in to help them out. For athletics, every single winter team qualified for postseason play. True testament to Mr. Whitten and the work that our parents and students do in our athletics. And just, it's, it's astounding. So tournament play was exhausting, but for all of the right reasons, because our kiddos were phenomenal in play and in sportsmanship. Again, true testament to Algonquin's excellence. And I have to take a moment to speak about Nate Anderson. Many of you know Nate. He was awarded the Boston Bruins Outstanding Student-Athlete Award. Phenomenal. He went to the Bruins game last week on the Jumbotron, met the Bruins team out on the ice, and recognized for his amazingness. And for those of you that know Nate, know, um, what an outstanding gentleman he is. True athlete, morals, academics, so I just wanted to take a moment to say thank, to thank him for what he does. And he's also a great mentor. He's on the athletic council, and he's, he's there promoting the smart and positive choices and connections that the kiddos need. Moving on to the, to department updates, I wanted to give a shout out to our improv. They, um, had their show this past Friday and Saturday. Thirty students wrote different scripts, um, um, on their own, and then performed them, different sketches. And it was so popular on the first night, they had to turn some people away, because it's held in the black box, which is okay, because on Saturday, they were able to get in, and it was equally filled. It just showcases, uh, the finance department and the work that they do. For English, we heard Jane and the, um, Algonquin Writing Center. But I also wanted to make sure that I didn't, um, miss out on the poetry out loud. Over 22,000 students competed, and seven participants made it to the third and final round, and one of them was our student, Joseph, so I had to give him a big shout out. It was wonderful to see the students perform. Northborough Key Laxus, uh, recorded the kiddo so that everybody could experience it and watch it and see it, if they weren't able to go down and see the competition. In science, um, I wanted to point out something that Lisa spoke about. We have some established internships, and ProtoNext Technology Corporation of Southborough is one of them, and they work with Mr. Rodman. Clarissa Wong and Laura Shi, Laura was also, a couple of months ago, um, received the superintendent's award, have been doing an internship and work there through this collaboration, and they bring their knowledge back to school. And it's just a great way, again, that Algonquin and the community are supporting real-life application of skills and development of skills. And that leads over to Guidance. The career day, so I, I was in the office, and I got to greet some of the parents and the local community business owners, and when we say over 70 parents and, and community business leaders came through the door, they really did, and they stayed the whole day. They engaged the children in multiple presentations, passed out information, resources, laid the groundwork and foundation for summer internships, next-year senior internships, and it's a true testament to the powerful, positive connections and collaborations that we have between Northborough and Southborough, supporting, um, Algonquin. And it, it lays the foundation, as Lisa said, to continue that internship opportunity for our seniors who really want to get invested in the field of work and make sure what they're interested in is what they want to do later on in life. And then the last item that I wanted to speak about was to thank our student body, our faculty, and our parents and community members for how they came together during their moment of solidarity, to remember the victims of Parkland. It was a wonderful event. And then through the, the phenomenal work of collaboration between faculty, students, student council, um, some of our student groups, students could then self-select different, um, activities that they wanted to participate in during their lunchtime, that they were interested in, how to continue, um, that day's movement. And so that didn't just happen without the amazing support from the community, Northborough Police Department, Central Office, our parents, and our faculty members. So I just wanted to make sure that I closed with that and thanked them for their support.
Thank you very much, thank you. Any questions? Then please feel free to go home.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, are there any other presenters? No, right? Okay, so now we go back to, go back to our regular agenda. So let's go to action on the minutes. Anybody have comments on that? I actually have one. On the minutes of Wednesday, January 17, under G, Audience Sharing, we do not have a Mrs. Frank, we have a Mrs. Frank. So that's small.
Okay.
A small change.
I'm still trying to find those minutes.
Mrs. Frank, um, Mrs. Frank. Uh, but other than that, does anybody else have any change? Changes, okay, so do I hear any motions?
I think that we accept the, um, the votes of Wednesday, January 17, 2018, and Wednesday, February 28, federal.
Yes, absolutely. Motion by Lynn for both of them, seconded by. You can vote for these, even though you, you weren't at these meetings. It's, it's, it's not mandatory that you were at the meeting in order for you to vote, because I'm just thinking, if we, yeah. Okay, all right, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Awesome, thank you very much. Moving on to superintendent's report to the committee, we've done the principal's report, so we're going to move on to enrollments.
Enrollments are in your packet, slight, slight changes, nothing significant from last month. We might have added one, one student in one grade and two in the next from last month's Monthly general fund expenditure report is in your packet, a vote to approve until audited. It is February, and Matt and I meet quite frequently over the budget. And I've been very watchful over, um, the expenditures as we move closer to the end of the year, certainly, particularly with all of the conversation we had about where we are with E&amp;D. So we're really, um, I wouldn't say we're concerned, but we're interested in what our final numbers are going to be. I think that moving forward, uh, we took a giant step this year with reducing the amount and the, uh, town's acceptance of that reduction in terms of how much we've, we turned back in E&amp;D for the assessments, and I think that path will continue for the next couple of years. So as we build up our E&amp;D, and I was really pleased at the response from both of the financial boards in Northborough and Southborough, and appreciate, um, their appreciation for the fact that we need to get that up as our free cash equivalent on a regional level. So I think that was very positive. Also.
Sorry?
Yep, that's, we do.
I know, we accept, uh, until audited, the, um, the general fund expenditure report of February 28, 2018.
Seconded by Lynn, seconded by Paul, definitely. Any questions? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Statement of revenue is also in your packet, and we have been approving this as well, and I do want to make note of, um, a, an edit, and Matt had alluded to this last month. I think it was Mr. Bykka who had some questions about the athletic receipts, and that has been adjusted, as we indicated that it would be this month. And so I just wanted to make note of that. Kudos to the high school with parking fees, we're over 100% collected. Yeah, so it's good. And I think we did discuss that we are anticipating that we'll have some additional receipts in with the spring athletic season picking up. Budget calendar is in your packet, and that's just for distribution purposes. We are moving very close with our public hearing being held tonight to our Southborough Town Meeting and our Northborough Town Meeting, where we will have a, um, article for the establishment of our stabilization fund. Again, huge step in the right direction.
Do you have to vote on this?
We have been.
We haven't voted on this?
Yeah.
I'm going to, that we approve until audited, the statement of revenue, uh, February 28, 2018.
Second. Seconded by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
I'm raising my hand. I just, that was totally unconscious. There we go. I think that's the first time in eight years I've actually raised my hand. Yes. I'm particularly excited about number six, so I will take a, a moment. We did have our special meeting, um, with bond counsel last Wednesday, right before the Southborough School Committee meeting. And I'm really pleased to say that, um, we had nine bids for our reissues of the bonds. Thank you, Kathy Ke, uh, you were able to attend.
I got a stamp there.
Kathleen, I think you were there as well? And Paul Buckin flew from Manchester, literally flew, 62 minutes, yes. And Paul, you were there as well, right?
Yep.
So the.
She was.
Yes. So, so this message is for you, um, we had nine bidders, which they found quite extraordinary, and, um, a reduction in the overall debt of $815,000. And Hallie, you were there too, yes, that was exciting across the table. I think you had your new nameplate, that was at the first name plate? Yes. $815,000 reduction in the overall debt. And that certainly benefits the town. So what you see in front of you is actually, um, we revised and voted the assessments based on that, and, uh, the towns were very pleased to see that we took quick action, because they are in fact then going to present that at the town meetings, particularly in Northborough, where, um, that brought the assessment down under eight. So it leads with a seven and not an eight, which was always a glorious moment.
That's good.
So that is, uh, all good. I would like the school committee just, you did vote last, okay, so we did already vote on that, I just wanted to make sure we voted the new assessments, and we did that last month, last week, last month. So we did have safe school readiness on the agenda for executive session, but I do want to say that, um, what we just experienced in terms of listening to Guidance, uh, this evening, talk about all the ways in which they make connections with our students, Dr. Walsh's update on the principal's report, and just the myriad of activities and opportunities we have for our students to participate, to actively engage, um, beyond the classroom, and the number of parents who support these activities and teachers that support these activities, and the writing center, which was really a student-with-a-teacher-driven initiative, students helping students, that is what safe school readiness is about. That's the proactive piece, not the reactive piece, that we, um, we unfortunately have to focus on more than we would like, which is, um, the reaction after. But all of what we just experienced today is an absolute perfect example of what being proactive with a safe school readiness plan is about, and that's about making connections with our kids. And that's why when we, when we went to the legislature, um, and asked for a waiver, they listened, and that's why five years ago, when myself and Chief Leahy from Northborough at the time, and Chief Moran, um, were invited to testify before Secretary DeLeo's, um, discipline hearings, before, um, Governor Patrick released his safe school report. And we were invited because of the connections that we make and the collaboration we have with our school, with our safety officials in our town. So that is a big part of our safe school readiness, which often goes overlooked, but is the most important part. When you feel back, a lot of, uh, the history around critical or active shooter incidents, it's because those, those kids were not connected or didn't feel connected to their school. And so, um, we should all, and I know we are proud of every presentation we had tonight, and every part of that has to do with having our kids connected to an adult, and to their school, and to their community. So, um, we, in keeping with our connections, on April 3rd, we attempted to make a video, a YouTube, but, um, no one showed up but the chiefs and myself that day, because we were a little confused with dates. We had snowstorms that changed the dates, and we had threads that were threaded backwards, and, um, Terry and Kathy Doglech are there, always championing us and cheering us on to have those productions made, and we hope that this is the first of many that will follow. We still plan to pop up by and do our commercial, our advertisement for this meeting. But on April 3rd, the two fire chiefs, the two police chiefs, myself, the SROs, Central Office, Greg certainly, um, the principals will be participating in our first, uh, since we introduced Alice. We didn't want to really call it a public forum, so we're calling it Making the Connection, Safe Schools, Safe Community. So we will be here at Algonquin to share with the community, um, what we're doing as a community and as a school around, um, the reactive piece and the proactive piece of our readiness plan. I also want to take this opportunity to extend our deepest appreciation to not only, um, the police and the fire, uh, through, uh, but all of the emergency management folks that helped us through the storm events. They were on the phone, we were on the phone, Karen Galligan, Rob, um, we just call him Robo affectionately in Northborough. We start chatting at three in the morning, and they don't stop until we know whether we should or shouldn't cancel school because of the road conditions or the power outages. The emergency management through the power outage phase of the last storm, uh, was a tremendous support to us, and, um, that's safety, and that's being ready for our students to return to school. Our custodial and maintenance crews were phenomenal. You know, they watched over our buildings as if it, you know, were their own homes. You know, they watched over our buildings as if it, you know, were their own homes. And so we just really, we got through it together. And our schools didn't, our last school came back up on power without generator on Saturday from the Wednesday early dismissal. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of those folks and all of Central Office. We had no heat, we had no power, we had no internet, but we had fun and made it through. So if it's the will of the committee, we can certainly have an executive session and move it to the end or have a discussion on this topic or wait until after April 3rd and have a follow-up conversation in our April meeting.
So, so for the new members, much of what is discussed when you talk about safe school readiness is security measures, which is only discussed in the executive session because obviously you don't want to tell everyone what your security measures are. So, so actually, I think that's a really good idea is, I think that April 3rd forum's going, unforum, is going to be, I think, very informative even to school committee members. And then maybe from that, after that, we can reschedule the executive session for another meeting so that you might have a better kind of foundation and understanding.
So is that, is that a night presentation?
Seven PM. And they'll be, we're still working on the agendas a little bit and there will be the flyer going out next week.
I think that's good because I think there are parents out there that have questions.
You know, I just have to share anecdotally, we had the PTO's, superintendent's advisory, all the presidents and the officers of the PTOs, the 10 PTO organizations meet. And it was interesting to hear the parents share that one of their biggest concerns is that they feel confident that their kids know what to do, but we don't duck and cover anymore, so they don't know what to do. So if they were in one of our buildings, the students would probably know the latest safety protocols. And one of the things that we try to stress is what the students are learning is not specific to their, their geographic proximity when they're learning the drills. It's actually life skills. So it's very validating for the work that we're doing, unfortunately, to hear other officers and, and spokespersons on safety issues to suggest that these are lifelong skills and, and tools that will help students no matter where they are in the world. So they're not specific to our school. They're specific to how we need to think and how we need to be aware in today's world. And so the parents said to me at the time, I don't know what to do. So if I was with the student in the schools, the students would be, you know, my children would be doing what they need to do and I wouldn't know what to do. So we talked about that a little bit with the chiefs and the notion that it's really not just the school's role to educate the greater community and our parents now would like some of that education. So that's a little bit of what we're going to talk about too on the 3rd.
I actually think that that came up on an interview with somebody either from Parkland or from Maryland recently about like how parents don't, their kids do, but how they wish themselves that they knew what to do.
So we're, we're going to work on that and we're going to start on the 3rd.
Okay. Excellent. All right, policy development and distribution. We have distributed these three policies.
Two points of note.
Yes.
Yippee. I think this is the fastest that we've ever moved the policy through and that would be the E and D is done policy for this year. And it allowed us to, to help with the process of getting our SMP rating. And I do want to mention that, Mr. Desmond, the link to those pictures, the locations is attached to the policy.
Excellent.
Worth waiting for and there it is.
Audience sharing. There being none. Personnel, there being none.
Worthy of framing, that's worth two for two for tonight.
Communications, there being none. Approval, bills and payrolls, I'm sure, I'm sure there are some.
Always have.
Yeah, there they are. And agenda items for next month, month of April.
Successful passing of our two town budgets by then, I would guess.
So the budget update, it'll be after April 3rd, so shall we reschedule the executive session for next month?
Mm-hmm.
Any other suggestions?
Julie Doyle will be here to present the technology update. She will be presenting at each of our school committee members' meetings in April as requested. So the presentation can be specific to the district rather than just an overall.
Yeah, that's good.
Great. I'll have to wait, wait, pushing papers out.
Okay.
Do you want to say something else?
That's it.
Any other suggestions for next month? Do I hear a motion? All is in favor?
You just couldn't wait to do this kind of time.